You're on.
We're on.
We're on.
Thank you.
I wonder how long we've been on.
Good evening and welcome to the Town of Stowe Select Board Meeting for May fourteenth twenty twenty four. Our first order of business is public comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Seeing no hands raised for that, I will move on to board member comments on any topics.
I have some.
Hector.
Uh, first, I wanted to acknowledge all the people and all the hard work that was put into putting a very together a very good town meeting. I received a number of people approached me and told me that they thought it was very well run. And I know that it took a lot of volunteer hours to put it together, run it smoothly. I know Denise and uh the town moderator did a lot of hard work. And then there was all the cleanup afterwards, so thank you for that. I also wanna commend the Shakespeare in the Park and the Shakespeare Company and what the uh Stowe TV and the library trustees put together. That was a great performance. And I know a lot of people enjoyed it and I certainly enjoyed it. And finally, I wanted to acknowledge that this is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Month. And a lot of information can be found about those cultures in the library and for those on Xfinity at least. Uh, I know that you can look on Xfinity to see all the educational material and media that they have for this month. And that's it.
Great, thank you. I'd like to second your your sentiment about town meeting. Well, well done, well put together and efficient and I'm grateful for all the work that goes into that. So, uh, due to our this evening scheduling complications, we're going to go to the acceptance of the deed for the Woodhead Family Realty Trust to the Stowe Conservation Commission. We have um Dan Woodhead and Margaret Katrinidis on. Hello, thank you for joining us. Um, little history on this. The Woodhead family sold land to the town starting in nineteen ninety nine as part of the Flag Hill Conservation Effort. And um, that was at a a deep discount. Bill Woodhead wanted to see um, the adjacent open meadows owned by the family added to Flag Hill and initially approached the town about conserving those this land in question tonight uh, in two thousand and six. Uh, at that time, um, the conservation director and um Bruce Treffrey and Kathy Sera walked the land. And uh, that was the onset of the conversations for what has finally come to fruition. Um, I knew Bill, actually, my family bought the land that I live on from from Bill and I knew him as a neighbor and uh as a fellow artist and um fascinating person. And we spoke on many occasions about his desire to conserve this land. And and uh, I was very much in favor. But Kathy Sera, I would say, is the one who was instrumental on bringing this to fruition. Uh, she's worked many years and and uh been in the process uh since at least two thousand and six, well, no, before. So um, it's a property of seven point three seven acres. It's open fields and woodlands and a portion of the Heathen Meadow Brook. And um it's it's a wonderful bluebird habitat and uh just a very nice addition to what's already in conservation adjacent. Um, some of the land that my grandparents bought from the Woodheads has been conserved and then the town conservation land and it's all all connected now. It's lovely. Um, so I'm personally delighted that this has has finally occurred. Um Bill passed away in twenty nineteen and and um, the the conversations took up with Dan and and Margaret shortly thereafter. Um, and um I think that that partly Bill's Bill's uh strong wishes to conserve this land carried through for for uh well beyond when he was here to speak for it himself. So, thank you so much for for continuing his wishes and and making this occur. In addition, Bruce Treffrey has stewarded the land for many years. He lives across the street and has uh enjoyed the meadows and and maintained the bluebird habitat. And um, just uh thoughtfully stewarded the land, I would say. So um Kathy's here, would you like to add some comments?
I think you said pretty much everything I wanted to say. Um, I just really, you know, uh, we all know that land conservation projects can be complicated and they can take a long time and sometimes things happen that change um outcomes. And, you know, because this was one of the first projects I started working on here way back in two thousand and six when we walked the property. Um, when I heard from Dan and Margaret after Bill's death that they wanted to donate the land in his memory, I just was blown away um, by that generosity and the commitment to seeing through what he started. So, um, I wanted to thank you both. I have talked with Margaret and emailed with Margaret and Dan many times on the phone, um, but not actually not seen you, so it is nice to see you, if only by Zoom. And um, you know, I may have been the person that got the deal done, but they are the people that made the deal happen. So, thanks to them.
Many thanks. Dan and Margaret, do you have anything you'd like to to add? Oh, I see uh Bill Maxfield's hand is up too.
I'll go ahead. Uh, I've been on the Open Space Committee since it was um uh started. And uh, we we deal with open space. No, with open space, which is quite often not open. This is an open meadow and and it is just fantastic. And having uh walked it several times since uh uh, you know, over the the past fifteen years, you you really get to appreciate it. And uh, it is open because it has been nurtured by Bruce Fletcher. And and you know he will continue to do it. So uh, it is a delightful open space and I just wanna thank the Woodheads. It 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 is uh, the town will take good care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wanna see if Margaret wants to say anything? Margaret, would you like to?
Yeah, I I woke up this morning thinking about things that we had done on the land. And um, it goes back into World War Two. Um playing as kids, helping with um farming. Um, just enjoying. One of my my strongest memories is that when the hay was cut, um, shortly thereafter, the stalks of the hay would become very sharp and hard. And of course, we went barefoot all summer. So I had to learn how to run through that stuff without piercing my skin. Just a lot of memories of of being there and realizing how it's integral to that landscape. That there's the swale, there's the brook, there's the trees up on the hill. And and it just all seems to, it needs to be together. It needs to not be cut off and and separated. So, I'm delighted to have it connected to the rest of of that land.
Well, thank you so much for your generosity. Anything else from the board?
Yeah, thanks again for this great gift. And I haven't been around Stowe as long as you do have, but I know I will treasure it and I enjoy the open space that we do have. And this is a great addition to the open space that we're will be able to enjoy. Just need to figure out how to get on it.
Uh, there's a a connection to the road.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a lovely parcel. I've driven by it for years and it's wonderful. So, you've made Stowe a little more magical.
Thank you.
Great.
So, I would take a motion to accept the deed.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the deed from the Woodhead Family Realty Trust to the Stowe Conservation Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
So, we also have a um a certificate of appreciation um for Margaret and Dan for your generosity. On this fourteenth day of May twenty twenty four, the Stowe Select Board hereby expresses its sincere appreciation to Margaret Katrinidis and Dan Woodhead, trustees of the Woodhead Family Realty Trust for their extraordinarily generous donation of seven point three seven acres of beautiful woodlands, open meadows, and wetlands on Boxborough Road to the Stowe Conservation Commission to be added to the abutting Flag Hill Conservation Area. Their donation is in memory of their brother Bill Woodhead, who tirelessly advocated for the permanent protection of this land, for its scenic beauty and wildlife habitat, and for the people of Stowe to enjoy as open space forever. On behalf of all Stowe's inhabitants, present and future, human and wild, the Stowe Select Board thanks you and all of the members of your family who share in your legacy of stewardship.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
Madam Chair, I move to approve and sign certificates of appreciation for Margaret Katrinidis and Daniel Woodhead.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm personally going to go over there and listen to the bluebirds on a regular basis because there are more of them than there are on my at my house around the corner. All right.
So will this be mailed, the certificate?
Yes, we will, we'll uh mail them out. We'll sign them this evening and and mail those out to you. So thank, nice to see your faces and to have conversations in person over this ethereal media.
Ethereal.
Thank you for coming. All right, we're gonna move on to the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you for rearranging slightly. Um, uh, first, I would just like to thank everyone who made town meeting possible. Um, there are so many folks who worked tirelessly over those few days and leading up to it. Um, that it's just, you know, it takes so many people to pull it off. And I just wanna thank everybody. I won't go through the names, um, but as I did last year, I sent in a letter to the paper to recognize folks personally. Um, but I just really appreciate everyone's help getting through that. Uh, tomorrow's the last day for in-person early voting. You can vote here on the first floor of town building tomorrow from nine AM to seven PM. And for those who wish to vote on Election Day, you can do so this Saturday from ten AM to four PM at Center School. Uh, I missed this last meeting, so I apologize, but I would like to acknowledge Phoebe in our office for all the work she did on the annual report. Uh, it really came out great. Printed books are available here in town building, uh, or you can find it on our website. Um, Tina has come up because we are thrilled to share that the library bids came in last week and we are within budget. So, we spent some time over the last week vetting the lowest bidder. Um, but everything has come back very positive and we intend to award a contract and finally get this project going. So, it's very exciting, very good news. Uh, it's been a long time coming. We're still not completely sold that it's happening yet, but um, it's very exciting. Um, in some other news that's very exciting for the Town of Stowe, uh, Bose was formally sold last week. The new owner is partnering with the folks with the intention of bringing the Master Sports Academy to town. Uh, we met with them this afternoon and they are working on their paperwork to submit for the planning board for the special permit process. So, um, you will see, um, I would expect sometime in the summer to have the first of the public hearings and then hope to have a decision, obviously, some months later. But um, they are on track to hopefully open in some fashion in Fall of Twenty Five. So, we'll keep you posted as we go through that, but um, it has officially sold. Um, and then lastly, for me, um, I was telling some of you before the meeting, I am heading to Washington DC this Thursday as part of Representative Laurie Trahan's Third District Day. Um, as you know, she's been a big supporter in Stowe, got us some funding for Track Road. Um, so uh, when when she reached out and sent the invitation, I said, you know what? I wanna stay sort of on the front line of any federal fens that might be coming our way or might be available. So, um, it's gonna be a very busy day. They have, she has meetings planned literally for almost eight straight hours, but um, it should be, it should be fun. So, uh, just to, just to let you know that. And that is it for me tonight.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Great news of all sorts, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, we have um.
Yes.
Clark Roselli.
Yes, so Chad, Chad Clark is here from Roselli Clark and Associates. He is gonna go over um, our the financial audit and any findings and anything that he thinks you all should know.
Great. Hello, Chad.
Hello, everyone, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, yes, I am going to go over the financial audit for what was fiscal year twenty three, so June of two thousand and twenty three. Um, so, anything more recently going on and uh, just in in disclosure, uh, we'll be starting to look at that in the coming months. Um, but we're gonna go back and touch base on uh, on how twenty three turned out in the audit report. Uh, did you all receive a copy of the financial audit? Or, okay. So, what I'm gonna, okay. Uh, I I, um, you know, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to put this in a bit more of a narrative discussional format than say, uh, uh, it's gonna be a little bit numery, but um, uh, I'm gonna try to explain it that way and make it a little uh, maybe more meaningful to everyone. Uh, where I'm gonna start is um, there's obviously a variety of financial statements that are included in here. Um, on page eleven is what's known as the uh, Statement of Net Position, uh, which is, that's the statement that has pretty much everything on it. It's full of accrual, you're gonna see your debt is included in it, your OPEB liability is included in it, your pension liability is included in it. Um, in all honesty, this is a GASB, um, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board statement. It's informational for you all, but it's formatted in a way that is probably not how you financially manage your town. So, I I just wanna start by saying that, like, if somebody's looking at it saying, well, what did it get out? This isn't what I'm used to seeing. Uh, there are change, there are differences, so. Uh, one of the things I'll point out is at the bottom of that is the town's total net position of forty one point two million. Um, that would be the equivalent of what anyone in the accounting world would call a fund balance or equity. Within that number is the net investment of capital assets. Your gross capital assets are around sixty three million. And this number is about twenty million less because it reduces down for accumulated depreciation and then for any outstanding debt, uh, like bonds and stuff that uh against those assets. Going down to the next section, you'll, there's a restricted four. That comprises about nineteen point two million. Those are restrictions uh primarily relative to uh legal or statutory um, restrictions, like uh, non-expat permanent funds, when you see that, are like trust funds. And obviously, community preservation, uh, who I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, that's got restrictions on how you're gonna spend the money. So it's not available to the town to just throw into the budget, uh, and that's why they're restricted. Uh, the unrestricted number indicates about a negative twelve million dollars. And that's, that's pretty commonplace uh across the Massachusetts. The reason being is the net OPEB liability, the other um, post-employment benefits, which is basically your retirees' health insurance. Uh, it still has an unfunded liability of eight point four million. And your net pension liability uh is still unfunded by about fourteen point two. So, those add up to around twenty two million. And that's what's really causing that negative eleven million, twelve million dollar number. We don't get too excited about that as far as it being a negative in the present because those are long-term liabilities. By design, you're looking to fund them over the next, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years. Um, and as you fund them, that liability will decrease. So, any questions about that? All right. Uh, the other thing I would point out, um, in general, the town had total cash and investments on June thirtieth of nineteen point eight million dollars, um, held in in various bank accounts. The next state of financial, set of financial I'm gonna talk about is the balance sheet, which is on page thirteen. This should be a little more normal. This is, this, this version of what's shown here is much closer to what, you know, Julie issues for a DOR. And um, you know, it's got your general fund listed, which is pretty straightforward, uh, your budgets. Uh, the only thing I would note is your general fund also includes your stabilization funds um, within within the fund balance and the cash. But there are are um there uh, the total you can see is about sixteen point eight million. Uh, this is an increase from the prior year of about half a million. So, all in all, these funds aren't really designed to make you money. So, the fact that you generated a a small surplus is actually a positive result um, overall. Um, and it, you know, there there's a a greater amount of money ready, ready to be spent in future periods. Um, also on there, I would point out that the town's unassigned fund balance in the general fund, which is four point nine million, that is money in the general fund that um has been accumulated over the years that has not been appropriated or allocated for other purposes. Um, in that regard, uh, that number represents uh about fifteen percent of your total general fund expenditures for the year, which is a good, solid, healthy number. Um, in in concept, that means that uh fifteen percent of next year's expenditures, you have waiting in surplus. So, if anything were to um happen unexpectedly, the town is able to kind of pivot and um, address those issues more easily. Additionally, the total general fund fund balance, which is the seven point seven million, that's actually almost a quarter of the town's annual general fund expenditures. So, uh, definitely a healthy place to be. Uh, there was no new long-term debt issued by the town during the year and you had about one point three million of debt paid down, resulting in an ending balance of only about nineteen million dollars. Um, I would also point out to the credit of the town that you continue to maintain your triple A bond rating, which is um, the highest that any community can have. So, congratulations on that. I'm gonna uh jump over now to the um talk about the inflows and outflows. And again, this is gonna be more of a narrative uh informational purpose. So, property taxes account for about eighty percent of the operational revenue of the town. Of that eighty percent, ninety four percent of it is made up of residential property taxes. So, obviously, the town is um, you know, very uh reliant upon it. Its um residential members, owners, um, in 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 keeping the operations going. Uh, probably allows for a more consistent revenue stream than saying more commercial as um based. Uh, it takes a little of that fluctuation out, but obviously too, um, you know, uh, the commercial base can sometimes add a little more growth factor. Um, but in this case, as I said, the the town's healthy on its financials in that regard. Uh, charges for services, um, I wanted to point out it reflected um about a thirty percent increase over the prior year. Uh, for anyone interested in why that would be, that relates to where the lawsuit proceeds that the town received was posted to. That's one-time money, obviously, so that that should probably go back down to a more normal uh revenue number for twenty four. Uh, operational grants and contributions increased one point three million. Uh, this was a result of one-time money relative to this two acres grant. And then obviously, the the ARPA funds um are are coming in and being spent now. On the expenditure side, uh, educational expenses were approximately sixty percent of the town's expenditures. That's up about two percent from the prior year. Public safety comprises uh fourteen percent and general government operations comprise uh just under twelve, twelve percent. Uh, no other operational functions exceeded ten percent. So, those are your three main um areas of uh outflow from operations. Um, if you look at the balance sheet and then the subsequent statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, uh, there's a list of different funds. One is general fund, one is community preservation, ARPA fund, town capital projects, and non-major. General fund speaks for itself, community preservation speaks for itself, and your capital project speaks for itself. Um, you're all well with this. The ARPA fund is a fund specifically carved out relative to uh the federal grant funds you received under the ARPA program. So, if you do like, hey, what did we do with ARPA money? That's the column you wanna look at. Um, and then non-major is pretty much a catch-all of all of the grants and trust funds um, that aren't so significant as requiring to be broken out. Um, we good?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great.
All right. Um, if anyone jumps over to page seventeen, I would just point out there's a the section of the financial statements for fiduciary funds. Um, by far, uh, the most significant of that is where your OPEB trust fund monies that you contribute are maintained and held. So, if you're curious, hey, we're, again, what's the status of our OPEB trusts, where where we're saying, where where's our piggy bank on this? Um, if you went to that part of the financial Um if you went to that part of the financial statements, uh you'll see that it has about uh just under one point four million accumulated in it. And um as of June thirtieth of twenty three, you were about fourteen percent funded. Uh with that amount towards the overall OPEB obligation, again, most people are funding this. In thought process of a thirty year time period and a lot of people are putting money in it now. You know, in this case, the town put in hmm looks like about a hundred and forty. Hundred and thirty five thousand, whi- which is which is good. A lot of places are looking at just running out to. When the pension system gets fully funded in the next decade, decade and a half. And then they're looking to reappropriate the pension um assessment. Towards funding the uh OPEB and and balancing everything out that way, so. And then the other column there that it it has a little bit of money in it eh in case you just uh private purpose trust funds are. Trust funds that aren't meant for um town operations, uh usually they're to um. Help the needy or their scholarships for the schools, the to benefit individuals. So that's what that fund is. I wanna point out um. Just going through here, at the uh. At the uh end of uh twenty three, the town had accumulated about one point one million in stabilization. It was available for appropriation moving forward and the town had gotten certified. By D O R for three point three million of free cash, so both both healthy numbers. Jump now, I I will, I'm pretty much done with my discussion about numbers and the financials. From here on out, it's it's more a little bit of a discussion on operations, do, is there any questions? Okay, um couple of things I just wanna point out as highlights uh relative to the audit. We just wanna remind communities to continue to be vigilant with regards to cyber fraud and cybersecurity. Uh municipalities are um large targets um for such people. And um it's one of those things where, you know, doing doing a training for a couple of years and then saying, yeah, yeah, we covered it is. That's never gonna be the answer uh going forward. Uh sadly, um so it's it's a matter of just staying on top of um keeping the technology up to date. Keeping the programs up to date and keeping the uh, you know, staff well educated in ways to avoid. You know, creating uh possible issues, um you know, most of what communities get hit with is the the um ransomware. And most of that ends up on computers because people open an email um that has the virus and that gets distributed through the system, so. The other thing that we would point out is um, you know. Eh eh it's kind of a crazy time economically and uh it's unpredictable. And you know, a a lot of people uh find themselves sometimes in uh some economic straits. And that tends to be when we find that fraud um can increase. And so we just wanna just continue to also uh remind the town that um. You know, our audit is a financial statement audit, uh we don't specifically go looking for fraud. If we identify any fraud, uh we are um is our job and we are required to bring it to the attention of the town, we did not note any of that. But uh just in general, uh ju- to to make sure there's a clear understanding, the what we do as a service is not a fraud audit. That would be much deeper, um so just um some uh internal. You know, controls and risk assessments are are always encouraged, try to mitigate that happening. Uh we would say that the uh town did take advantage of the uh interest rate increases in the savings accounts. There was a spike up of investment income, which is always nice, I mean, let the let the banks and investors pay you. Some money to uh fund the town's operations, um you know, from from outside the town, it is a wonderful thing. I would also make a note that we had noted since coming in that there were some unused capital projects on monies, unused. Grant and contribution monies, uh this was something that actually D O R had a number of years ago asked us to bring to the attention of towns that. Maybe it over over. Not not identified them as options for funding different projects or um. Things that could be used around the community and to remind them of that and uh the current. The current balances that we would designate as stagnant are down to twenty, which is actually a good number, cause not. Obviously, not all money that's contributed to town is immediately gonna be spent out. You know, the it's got purposes, it's got timing and things like that, so I do wanna give the uh town some credit on. Looking at those numbers and trying to maximize the benefit of existing funds. Towards the present. One of the things uh that was noted is my understanding is that the town, the town has gotten some credit cards or a credit card. Within that, there were some expenses relative to uh international fees and sales taxes. Now, it's not illegal for the town to pay sales tax, however, it's not necessary for the town to pay sales tax either. So um it can become a little e- you know, when you're purchasing things online, it's it's maybe a little more challenging. To work in the sales tax exemption um information and get that in, but. We would just uh suggest that as we all move to a digital world, this isn't gonna get any less, this is gonna grow. Uh to find some ways internally to um. Make sure that those exemptions are uh maximized and that the department heads or whoever are doing it. Understand that, you know, part of part of their fiduciary duty is to try to avoid that, uh incurring any unnecessary costs. The uh, I'm just gonna jump over for a minute on the grant, so this year the town did have a single audit. Which if anyone's not familiar with it, it is a, if any community expends more than seven hundred fifty thousand. In federal grant funds, they are required to have a uh compliance audit performed under with. Uniform guidance rules the Fed established and and this audit is called a single audit. In this particular year, um. The uh, let me find my notes here. The town did uh did end up with a a single audit. Um about a hundred and fifteen thousand of grant, eh I'm sorry, about eight hundred and fifteen thousand grand expenditures, of which. Eight hundred and five of it was ARPA, so um the completely blame this on ARPA. In as part of that process, uh we did note an area for improvement, um there's. ARPA is a brand new grant and it's not gonna be around much longer, uh but as part of the brand new um. Grant, there came new reporting requirements that nobody was familiar with anywhere, cause it was all new. There has been a consistent misunderstanding amongst many of our clients of the term obligated. And um some of the reporting um by the town um uh had had followed along with the same. Um error in that regard as many other communities, uh that's been rectified now eh moving forward. Uh one of the things I wanna point out about obligated is. ARPA funds have to be one hundred percent obligated by this December thirty first. If not, they're subject to being returned to the Fed unused. And so where the confusion um comes in on obligated is. Sometimes the board like yourself, you get presented with a, alright, we're gonna carve out and use two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds. You know, to fix a park. All favor yes, okay. That would seem maybe internally like that's an obligation, but under the federal rules it is not. Federal rules under uh for obligation is you must have contracted with a vendor or with a persons. To perform those services. So regards to anything that you're planning here on out from ARPA, by this December. Um you need a purchase order or a contract in place um for those funds. So um just wanna make sure everyone's available that aware of that and then you have two more years to actually spend the money. All my money has to be spent by December thirty first, two thousand twenty six, so. That does it for what I was looking to cover with you all, I hope it was interesting. I know, I know how accounting can be, um but uh can I. Operationally or accounting wise or anything, any questions or thoughts?
Um you mentioned that twenty three looked good because we had the income from the lawsuit and didn't have any new borrowing. Does that mean twenty four might not look so good because of the borrowing for the schools and the library?
Um no, um the. The thing about borrowing is you raise the funds to match up with as you pay the debt service. So eh while there eh while there is a liability involved and that's only on the net on the net position side. In that process, you also gain an asset. You know, if you if you spend ten that, if you spend ten million dollars on a project, yes, you incur ten million dollars of a bond. But you also incur a ten million dollar assets, capital asset that goes on the books. That part kind of washes itself out in that regards and then as I said, the. The aspect of profit and loss relative to debt is that um. As the debt service comes due, which is the principal and interest every year, you're raising that actively at the same time. Um as part of property taxes.
Another question, the issue you brought up about the sales tax that we're paying, is that something that now that we have a procurement person? Would actually be?
No, so I've been working on a policy for the credit cards, um so just so you're aware. We were spending a lot of mon- well, I should say employees are spending a lot of money out of their own pocket, purchasing town goods. Um when I came here, I had been asked repeatedly um if there was something that we could do. Um I put it off for a while, but finally we um I went ahead with um a video bank. And we have sort of a town account with subaccounts. So I log in almost every single day to see who's purchasing what and make sure we have proper documentation. The problem is when you go online sometimes, so the instance with we had an international fee. Nowhere in that purchase did they know they were paying an international fee until the credit card bill came in and then we had like a dollar thirty five international fee. So there are things like that that we need to work on, um and then the sales tax, a lot of it is. For instance, the police department, uh a shade breaks, they need to get one, someone runs down to Lowe's and forgets the tax exempt card. It's it's not the chief, it's someone else getting it, they don't even think twice about it, it comes back with sales tax. The few times that that's happened, I've made the employees pay the sales tax. So if someone's incurring it, they are giving me the cash, we're depositing it into the account and then paying. And so we're still paying it out, but it's coming back in to offset it, um that also will go into the policy. Uh but you can ask, there's about five or six department heads that have a credit card. And you can ask them, I am on them all the time about their documentation. Um and what they provide and what we have for records and what purchase are being made and. Um because it's not a free for all and it's not in lieu of an account. If we can open up a a valid account, they are to still open up an account and follow the proper procurement. Um but you know, as Chad said, in a digital world, there are companies that don't wanna do accounts anymore, it's, you know. Uh we have subscriptions, a library has subscriptions for services, DO TV has subscriptions. The only option is a credit card and I did not think it was fair any any longer to have employees to continue to incur these charges. When their town products or or supplies, so. I will have a policy, I've been working on a draft for quite some time and then something else comes up that I wanna put in the policy. Um so I will have a draft for you, but rest assured, the town, even though it may look like we have paid sales tax, we are not because. The employees are reimbursing us for it.
Great, thank you.
Excellent.
So just overall, it sounds like you've said in many circumstances that we're healthy, that things look good, that. Our OPEB balances are typical of other towns. Do you have any specific guidance or recommendations with respect to funding our future debt or anything like that? Sounds like things are good, I just wanted to ask that question.
I would say eh. The biggest thing about debt again is it's it's long term planning, long term um assumptions, I mean like you. You're getting a triple A in the town because when S and P came in, they saw that. You were addressing your long term obligations in a way that they found reasonable. And they're comparing that against a national benchmark, not just even a Massachusetts benchmark. You know, eh the the debt aspect, I think a lot of it is um. You know, balancing the timing of when older debt is gonna mature out versus starting new projects. Um if you if you have some old debt that's gonna mature out and the debt service would stop, okay, you can bring on a new project. And you know, the the taxpayers may not feel that as much because you're kind of swapping one out for another. When you start stacking and layering debt, you know, that's when people start feeling it a little more. And you know, how how best to balance that, you know, versus excluded debt or non excluded debt, eh I think is um. Somewhat based, I think, on the project and somewhat based on the long term capital goals of the town, I think. Having a long term capital plan is probably one of the best ways of managing some of that debt because you can time it out. Um it also gives you the ability to um, you know, consider. Funding some of your long term capital uh costs through free cash. You know, if you're lucky to achieve it versus uh having to go to debt. You know, eh you know. There's this intent of um, free cash is kind of a weird animal in the fact that you, everybody wants free cash. Because it allows them to do things and in a lot of cases, free cash is a result of revenues coming in higher than budgeted and expenses. Being less than appropriated, so it's a kind of a win win. And some people may say, well, should we be changing the budget then, like? The issue comes down to, if you don't have available free cash, you can't, free cash is a way of self financing. Which means that it allows you to um. You know, purchase these things without incurring the interest expense that debt would. And interest expense is brutal right now, um there's um, you know, it's gone up. Probably forty or fifty percent, or actually, it's almost doubled. Um I think we're at like seven or eight percent right now for some bonded debt that was only four or five percent just a couple of years ago. And as much as I would love to say, hey, time the market. I mean, we came into this year with the Fed saying their goal was to lower rates two or three times. You know, we're now into the fifth month, they haven't lowered rates and they've kind of indicated they're not sure when this year they will. Um which doesn't really bode well for interest rates to retreat anytime in the near future. Um which obviously impacts some costs, um you know, from a, you know. Who knows where any of that's gonna go, what I would maybe suggest is I heard you all talking about moving forward some with some construction projects. What you, there is the option of short term debt, bands, which is for anyone involved in the, it's like a construction loan. You know, you take a little bit at a time as you need it um to pay the vendor and then at the end of the project, you do a full bonding. Band interest tends to be notably less than bond interest. So the only thing I might throw out there right now is is, you know. I I'm not gonna claim to be a financing debt expert, I would say utilize your your you you have a financial, you have a debt advisor. But part of the goal here may be to maybe not run out and bond that money right now. Maybe look to kind of keep it short term and wait for rates to hopefully go down, now it's a gamble, rates could go up. But when you're asking for a strategy, that is something to kind of keep in mind of, um you know, back. Back, I think, right before the uh the housing crash, if you, I I had a um. Had a town that was being told, oh, rates are gonna go up, rates are gonna go up. They had an eighty million dollar school they were building, they didn't even wait for bands, they just bonded the whole eighty million. Because they were being told that rates were gonna go up two percent during the two year construction. Because they were being told that rates were gonna go up two percent during the two-year construction. And they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna take that gamble. Um so that's one way of looking at it. Uh I don't have your excess capacity number. Um for property taxes in front of me, but I see some heads shaking, so you know what I'm talking about. You know, excess capacity is that balance of, do we need the money, don't we need the money? Well, there's an argument in the financing world that says, take the money now. And it, put it into stabilization because you can get it now and again, you can build up this piggy bank. That you can fund future capital projects without incurring an interest cost. So obviously, there's a flip to that um version of the world too. But relative to. The question of debt financing or financing capital, that maximizing that option or availability is, is one way of also. Um creating some uh project funds.
And I will just add to that, that I actually spoke to our treasurer today and we are going to do a short-term borrowing for the library project. Um so we do plan to do short-term bands until the time is right to borrow it permanently.
What's the word?
Bond anticipation note.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtful questions, you guys, anything else?
Yeah, yeah, those are good ones.
I think we're kind of covered my question, so.
All said, everyone?
Satisfied.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, good.
Thank you all very much, we, we appreciate the business and you know, work with the town. Good place to work when we go in, so.
Thanks, Chad.
Thanks, bye.
Well, thank you Denise. Setting us up like this. So we also, we also have. Financial advisors that help the town?
We do, so we use Unibank Financial Advisory Services. Um and so we have a financial advisor, so um we meet with them and talk about, you know. The interest rates, whether we should borrow. Typically, once a year, we'll meet and talk about any big projects coming online, cause then they could advise us properly. Um when we started the whole library project, I had them run some debt schedules. Uh when we started talking about the school project, they run the debt schedules to show us what the tax implications would be based on when things are borrowed. And so they're very helpful, um sort of steering us into whether or not we should uh permanently finance or we should do um bands for the time being.
So what, I know one of the things, you know, he mentions having this long-term capital plan is our best bet. And I know we talked about that in the past and I honestly just don't remember the answer. Do we have a long-term capital plan?
Okay, so we don't um.
Capital planning is always asking for it, aren't they?
So capital planning maintains a five-year plan.
That's not long-term?
It's not long-term, no, we would really ideally have like a fifteen, twenty-year um plan.
I mean, we should anticipate which buildings, like the Shova School are s- have lived their life. I mean, buildings that were built in the sixties were built with a certain standard, which is fifty years or whatever it is, I mean, you know this more than I do, right? So we should, you're right, have this sense of, these are all our assets and they are depreciating and. In some cases, need repairs or replacement, so.
Right, it's, so the, the assessments that. For the two schools that were voted down at town meeting, um is ideally what we would do. Is we would bring in a company that would look through all of our buildings, our infrastructure, our.
This is what you said before.
Yes, and then they would go through, evaluate everything and give us a report that says, you know, here's what you need to do next year. Here's what we anticipate the year after, so that you can actually plan for. When you're gonna have to have these capital investments versus.
This whole layering thing.
Yes, so, yeah, the layering, so it's, it's a funny animal here in Stow because we did not historically borrow within the levy. Anytime we wanted to borrow, it went out on a debt exclusion, the voters decided if they wanted to pay for it, it's all on the taxpayer dime. I have a different philosophy, I have a philosophy of, it, there needs to be balance. We should be borrowing inside the levy, that's part of our budget, we have a um, a debt budget that we pay principal and interest. And then there's the um, the excluded debt. So in a perfect world, in, you would have a plan, so. For instance, back when I started out as treasurer a million years ago, I would sit down and look at my schedules and we would have. Inside the levy, outside the levy, and then I'd say, okay, this year we're making a million dollars worth of payments. That are falling off completely, the final debt is being paid, that's gonna free up a million dollars in our debt. So what projects can we then borrow that makes up that million? So as you said, people aren't noticing a difference. You budget for a million dollars in debt, it should always be a million dollars, maybe some years, it'll drop down to eight hundred, but you're gonna add two hundred more. Um we didn't have that here because there was very little debt inside the levy. So the debt, for instance, the additional funds for the library, that's new, I mean, it's inside the budget. But nothing's coming off because we never borrowed in that fashion. Um you know, so the goal would be to develop a healthy capital and debt plan that we can see. Okay, we're gonna borrow the library for the two point five million that I committed for five years. Get that paid off, then that, in fi- in six years, what can we add on that's the same rough annual cost? Then you add on a new project and then it continues so that it's not fluctuating the budget. You're just maintaining as things are rolling off, you can add more in its place. But getting to that point is a little painful because there's nothing that's rolling off, you're just adding until you start. Rolling stuff off, if that makes sense.
Yes, and so why, I think I remember the answer, so I'm gonna ask this question again, why don't we, aren't we preparing this long-term capital plan?
It's just hasn't come up, it's just timing.
Indicate also that it would cost a fair amount to hire a firm?
It would, so in my prior community, I, we got a grant, um and it was part of a state, um. And I forget, it was like some facilities grant, um and they came in and did that for us and then. Part of that was the software to maintain it, so through the grant, we got the complete assessment and then the software. Candidly, the software was, it was, it was a bit more robust than we could have ever imagined. I mean, my poor facility staff there would get a text every single morning, check the fire extinguishers. The next morning, check the smoke detectors, the next, I mean, it laid every single piece of infrastructure that we had into a plan. You know, the first day of the month, check the, the levels in the oil tanks. So it was never maintained to the level that it should because you should, you would need an entire department to go through and check every single thing that it. But it still gave me a good framework that, when it was coming to budget season, I'd look at that and say, okay, what did they expect to go this year, what can we plan for? Versus what do we need to react to? And I'd look at my list, I would literally copy it, and that's what would go into my budget request. Um so it, it is ideal to get there, we just haven't had the time to get there. Or to look for any grants that cover that kind of thing.
Should we?
Make the time?
Or, or should we even without a formal, I mean, intuitively, we know that certain. Big projects are gonna come down. And, and I know the capital planning probably anticipates those. I'm just wondering, should this be prioritized in some manner even on a seat of the pants, like huh, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, certainly the big things we know, it's the stuff that, you know. The stuff that we just don't have any idea of, you know, the, the H V A C systems or the heat pumps, so the, right, the elevator. Um a lot of the building, a lot of these assessments, um they base it on the square footage of the buildings, the number of floors in the buildings. Because they have to go through everything. Um and so we can certainly make that a priority and we can certainly get some um options to. Um bring that in, I mean, again, it was a huge asset to me in Groveland. It's just then the maintenance of doing everything that then you're supposed to do to make sure it stays uh proactive instead of reactive, it's, it's a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you think there's a way to, to find a middle ground with that? Where the information could come to you without having such a robust program? The only reason why I bring it up is um, uh there was a program called Property Ware, which um. Also was extremely robust. And you're right, that, it's like every day. It was just amazing, like they wanted you to walk around and check every sprinkler head in this particular building. To make sure that the date stamp on the thing was not out of date. Um I mean, it gets, it really does get to that uh nitty-gritty stuff. So but um what we ended up doing with the company is we went back and said, um. Can we like bring this back a little? Um and actually, we, it was able to be done, so I'm just wondering if that's a possibility where. Um it would make sense, um where it's not so robust that it becomes overly cumbersome. But it gives, as an example for you, um that cut sheet you're talking about. Um to say, okay, well, this year, let's pull this, let's see what's going on.
Yeah, I mean, I think you certainly could, I think the difficulty with that, at least again, the one I'm familiar with, it was. You know, here's what you can do five years from now, provided you have preventative maintenance on the four years leading up to it. If you don't do your preventative maintenance, oh, you might need that next year versus five years from now. So there's still sort of this, um you know, a, a long-range plan, but then it's gonna take preventative. Measures of some sort in the out years to then get to that point. Um I mean, I would think it could be as robust as we need it to be. And I know that we have records, you know, but they're just not, they're not together. That it's not like we can just go to one spot and say, oh, the roof was done on this day and this is who put it in and this is how much it cost and. You know, but could we find it if we went through files and, yes? It's funny, Lynda and I was just talking and I said, but the problem with that, it's just easy, just easy to pay somebody to do it. Instead of having people go through files and figure out where the information is and then taking that and putting into a system. And that's the difficulty. So yeah, I mean, we could certainly, I can explore, I can actually go back through my records and figure out what we had applied for. Um I actually think it was the Community Compact, I think it was the first time they rolled out the Community Compact, that was the first thing I had applied for in Groveland. Was the facility assessment. And so I can see what opportunities, I mean, I do think there's value in having it done. And there's value in having an independent company come in and give you it, instead of having someone on staff say, oh, we don't need to do that, we just fixed that two years ago. Oh, but you're not the expert in it, you know, I mean, yes, it's good to know, but it would still have, be nice to have somebody with. Um sort of independent view, say, yes, that should have, you did that two years ago, it has a ten-year useful life, I'd start looking at it in year eight or nine. So. Oh, we commit, I, I mean, I can make that a priority, it's something I've wanted to do since I came here. Um and we have talked about it in the past because it is, it is, it's a, it's a, it's an asset and I think um it would certainly help. Not all of our facility issues because obviously things just happen, um but it would, it would help us plan better.
Well, it would help the taxpayers understand what's happening with tax, you know, changes, so I think. It, it does make a lot of sense, so see, well, we'll see, okay.
Thank you, more very good questions.
Arnie, fine.
Yeah. Arnie, thank you for waiting patiently through our various other appointments. I'm ready for you.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Well, I'm, I'm Arnie Epstein, uh I'm a chair of the Stow Green Advisory Committee. Uh tonight, I'll be doing a, an update briefly on the Stow Climate Action Plan. The Energize Stow website and introduce a new state program called Climate Leaders. So a key uh component of the charter of the Green Advisory Committee. Is to develop and oversee a climate action plan for the town that aligns Stow with the state's overall. Greenhouse gas emissions limits as established in the landmark twenty-twenty-one climate roadmap legislation. We have been working on the Climate Action Plan since the committee started meeting. And we plan to bring it to the select board uh next month on June twenty-fifth. Uh in addition to the work of the committee. Uh we've um undertook a survey of the town, received over three hundred responses. Uh to our questionnaire. Uh we circulated a draft of the plan to residents and town government earlier this year. And received valuable input, which was incorporated in the plan. We are now working with a graphics designer to make the plan accessible to all Stow residents. We've also been partnering with Sustainable Stow, the town's volunteer sustainability group. To develop a new website called Energize Stow, which will be launched concurrently with the Climate Action Plan. Energize Stow's goal is to encourage progress towards meeting the goals of the Climate Action Plan through the actions of town residents. So um that's my update on where we stand with the Climate Action Plan. We are very close, we hope to bring it to you on June twenty-fifth. Along with the uh formal introduction of this new website called Energize Stow. Um now I'd like to turn to this new state program called the Climate Leaders Program. Is it?
It's not working?
Not working.
No, I'll just click through it.
All right. So this is a new program, uh is uh just being established this year. By the state's uh Green Communities Division. The intent of the program is to encourage decarbonization of municipal buildings and vehicles. Uh to achieve this designation, if you achieve this designation, you. Uh you uh have added benefits, but you, to get that designation, you have also added requirements. And I'll touch on both of them. And the Stow Green Advisory Committee is recommending the Climate Leaders designation for Stow. And we are, as part of that recommendation, we're also um recommending that we include the Stow schools. As part of the Climate Leaders Program. Next slide, please. So just a bit of history uh on Stow as a green community. We were designated as a green community back in two thousand fifteen. Uh the only reason this next two sub-bullets are in there is just to make you aware that since designation as green community. The municipal buildings that we've been tracking and created an energy reduction plan for did not include center and hail. At the time that we were designated a green community, Bolton uh was not a green community. We were part of a regionalized school district and it was felt that at the time that the Stow schools. Uh would not be included in the baseline, so since that time. We've been tracking all the other town municipal buildings and vehicles, uh not including the, the schools. The um downside of that is that the Center and Hale have. Not been able to qualify for any of the Green Communities grants that we've been uh applying for since our designation. So since our designation as a green community, we've, uh among other things, we've retrofit three municipal buildings to heat pumps. With support from Green Communities Grants, that's the police, the town building. Uh the highway department office. And we were awarded earlier this year, the half-million-dollar Green Communities. Building Decarbonization Grant uh to support the renovation of Randall Library and I'm thrilled. To hear the news uh earlier that this project is, is moving ahead. So what are the benefits of Climate Leaders designation? As I said, this is a brand-new program, they're just rolling it out this year. They haven't finalized uh all of the benefits, this is a copy and paste from a. A presentation on the Climate Leaders Program. But what, what we, we understand that the, the benefits of the new program will be finalized in next month, in June. Uh but they will include uh more access to the existing Green Communities competitive grant application. As well as a new accelerator grant. And we feel that that, uh we haven't seen what the details of that is. But the intent there is to help communities to decarbonize their municipal buildings. And if we are able to include the schools in this Climate Leaders designation, that would be a substantial benefit. Next slide, please. So I don't know if that can be easily read, but these are the requirements for the Climate Leaders designation. There's basically six of them. The first three, uh we have already accomplished. We are a green community in good standing. We're actually a specially designated green community. I won't go into what that means, but it does mean that we. Uh, can get higher levels of grants for certain prescriptive uh energy efficiency measures. Uh, we have a local body to advise the municipality on clean energy. That's our uh Green Advisory Committee. And we have adopted the specialized opt-in uh building code. We were the sixteenth community in the state to do so. So the uh uh other three uh requirements we'll go through uh in the next couple of slides. Next slide, please. So one of the requirements is adopting what's called a zero emissions first vehicle policy. Um, what that does is establishes a hierarchy. Of uh vehicles when the town acquires a new vehicle. This will also apply. To the schools, uh if the schools do become part of Climate Leaders Program. So the hierarchy, I think, is fairly self-evident. You you would, if if available, you would start with an electric vehicle. Then a plug-in hybrid, and then a hybrid, and then the most fuel efficient gas or diesel vehicle that's available. There are a number of exempt exemptions to this policy. Uh, they're similar to the exemptions that are currently in effect for the fuel efficient vehicle policy that. Uh, we've we we did adopt at the time we became a green community. So heavy duty vehicles such as fire and highway department vehicles are exempt. Uh, vehicles that are not completely available or fit for use are exempt. Uh, that would include. If we had an ambulance and police cruisers. Uh, but you know, to be just. They do say in the details of the policy that those exemptions may change over time. Uh, the next slide, please. So one of the other requirements is uh developing what's called a decarbonization roadmap for the municipal buildings. So that's a high level plan to eliminate use of onsite fossil fuels. In municipal buildings by twenty fifty, and that's the same date. That the state is targeting for uh achieving uh net zero emissions statewide. That's what the uh Stowe Green Advisory Committee has been given as a charter to align the town of Stowe. With the statewide uh targets. So this is intended to be a fairly high level plan. Uh, they call it a zero over time approach with triggering events. You know, for example, at the end of life of HVAC equipment, you would see whether it's possible. To not replace those in kind with a fossil fuel system, but use a, you know, air source or ground source heat pump in its place. We did apply for and were awarded a grant, uh it's called a technical assistance grant uh last week. Uh, to support the development of the decarbonization roadmap. Uh, we're thinking that that would be mostly used to support the development of that roadmap for. The Stowe schools. So just a slide on adding the Stowe schools, um. As I mentioned, if if the schools uh are added to our baseline of municipal buildings. They would then become available for Climate Leaders funding. Uh, they would have to adopt uh the same. Uh, two requirements that we just spoke to. They would have to adopt the zero emissions first vehicle policy. That does not include school buses. Uh, and they would have to adopt a a decarbonization roadmap for Center and Hale. And as I mentioned, we're looking to use the consultant support that we were awarded last week to help. Uh, the facilities manager at Center and Hale developed that that roadmap for those two schools. I've met with the uh Nishoba Regional School District Administration, the superintendent, the. Facilities Director and the Operations Director. Uh, they're very enthusiastic about being included in this program. Uh, the one thing that was mentioned uh during that meeting. Was that although the superintendent would need to sign off on those two requirements that we spoke to. Uh, he would need to get the support from the school committee in order to do so. So uh at the moment, the the school committee is uh will not uh meet again to consider a matter like this. Until the fall. So that will basically uh establish what I'm looking for as a potential timeline for our. Designation as a climate leader. So uh the next slide is really the last slide of this presentation. Uh, as I mentioned, this is the first year that this program is being offered by the state. There are two. Potential dates for applying or deadline dates for applying. The first is. The end of July, July twenty fifth. I think that may have been a possibility if we were not to include the schools. But uh the Green Advisory Committee feels, I and I think it's a wise choice that we should include the schools. Uh, given that. The school committee would, you know, not meet and be able to express, you know, their. Views on ad- adopting those two policies I mentioned. That that would mean bringing the um application for a climate leader out till to their second um. Point during the year, which is uh the end of December. So my thought about a potential timeline for our designation, including the schools. Would be this spring and summer. Uh, we work with the the facilities manager at the Nishoba. Would work with the consultant to develop the decarbonization roadmap for Center and Hale. I'd work with the consultant along with our faci- our building commissioner. To develop the decarbonization roadmap for our other municipal buildings. Uh, in the full, excuse me, in the fall. We'd uh come back to you and ask for your support in adopting. The decarbonization roadmap and the zero emissions uh vehicle fuel policy. Uh, and then that would like, that would have us ready for. Submitting our application to become a climate leader by that next deadline, which would be the end of December. And um, I think the last slide is just a link to the state. Website that has a lot more information on this on this new program. I'm. I'm excited about it. I think the Green Advisory Committee is is, you know, is is excited about it. Uh, I I'd. Like to think that, you know, Stowe is really becoming a a leader in in. Uh, sustainability and climate action and uh. I would, you know, I think it would be a um something that we would wanna target to be one of the first communities in the state to. Get that designation. So any questions?
Which is ironic since I did was at the Green Advisory Committee meeting, but didn't understand then that I didn't understand this, but I do now. What is the link between the Stowe schools and Bolton's designation?
At at when we became a Green Advisory Committee?
Yeah, what difference did it make what Bolton did?
It just. We we potentially could have included the schools at that time. It was felt. That it would be difficult working regionally. Uh, with the facilities manager for who is in charge of. All three towns when, you know, when one of his towns was not a a green community.
So Bolton is now a green.
Great Bolton is now, I think, was as of two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, but did.
So all three included.
So all three communities are now green communities, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, I will just add that um the via zero emission vehicle first policy, um. While the school has to adopt it, it really won't apply here because all their vehicles are registered to through the administration office, which is Bolton. So they don't have any vehicles at this time registered to either Center or Hale. So. Uh, Arnie and I were talking about, you know, the likelihood that the school will accept it, but as long as it's made clear that those vehicles. That are registered in Bolton are exempt from that policy. At this point, um we figured it should be an easy uh adoption on their end. Um, also, I'm sorry. Also, um I met with um the Facilities Director and Operations Manager from Nishoba. Uh, maybe like a month or so ago. Uh, and we were talking about um this and uh specifically because they are looking ahead. And they are looking at the upgrade of their um boiler systems, I think it was the boiler systems. Um, and they are looking to go to a more sustainable approach, which has a significant cost for both schools. Um, and so the thought process was, you know, once we get them in this. Once we get them under our designation, and if we are awarded a climate leader designation, it will open up more grant funding. Uh, for some of these larger infrastructure projects that would fall solely on the taxpayer. Um, you know, if we're talking a half million dollars to upgrade each school. Um, so hopefully we can get in and then by the time we're ready to start looking at those things. We will be part of the this program and have access to more opportunities.
So maybe even grant funding for capital asset plans?
Maybe. Yes, to go green.
Yeah, okay.
Solar panels over the parking lots. Um, my question is, I understand why you are proposing to skip the July deadline and move to December. Has there been any indication that towns that wait might be penalized, that the funding may be reduced at that time, that there's a cap? That we might lose out on or?
I haven't heard um anything like that. As of today, there are no climate leader programs. The the program is just being introduced by the state this year. Um. I haven't heard there'd be a penalty in terms of availability of grants.
Well, even even a non-int- unintended penalty, you know, it's like. Do we jump and become one of the first ones? Like we were one of the first MVP communities, you know, so that really set the stage for us to. Blossom. Um. So, yeah, I'm sure the committee has talked about it, but that that was, that's always my angst that, you know, you might miss out on.
It's a, it's a good question.
No, it's like, there's no good answer to it.
The follow-up question to that is if we did do the one in uh July.
Yes, could we also?
Also expand and then add the schools afterwards. Um, when they came in, because at that point in time, we're then already kind of in the pipeline.
We're in the and we become someone.
Right.
That's a another good thought. I can. Ask our regional Green Communities Coordinator about that, what this is gonna entail. Once the schools are added, we have to establish a new so-called baseline.
Sure.
Um, and you have to establish a new baseline in any event there. The baseline that we currently had been working from and had our energy reduction plan was based on. Was the energy use and greenhouse gas emissions of municipal buildings in the. Town less the schools as of two thousand fifteen. So we have to establish a new baseline to become a climate leader. Um, we could potentially, as you suggest. Uh, establish a twenty twenty two baseline with these same buildings that are currently. Under our Green Communities, you know, tracking system. And then see, you know, can we then add the schools? You know.
Up in the fall.
And then establish the the, you know, the baseline which would include the schools. I will, I'll follow up on that.
Because I I imagine there's other communities throughout the state.
Yeah, they're just jumping on this.
Yeah, that are really looking at this thing going, hey, which?
Yeah, I don't know how many communities are. I mean, it's certainly limited by, I think, the number of. Communities in the state so far that have adopted the specialized opt-in code, which is one of the requirements. Is approaching forty. Um, and we were number sixteen. Um. So that, you know, so it it couldn't be every community, but it could be a number of communities who are looking at at doing this this year.
Been very interested to hear the response back when you go back to your regional advisor.
At the risk of um oversimplifying things, which I tend to wanna do. Is there a way that we could make that assessment for the baseline? And include the data for the schools so that the assessment was done, including the schools, but some. Sort of not submit that data until the school committee had a chance to. To uh agree to.
We have been awarded the the grant. I have communicated with the facilities manager in Nishoba. We. Plan on doing this development of, you know, both the baseline and the. This spring and summer. We're not planning on waiting for the school committee to meet. I that was. You know, so we 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 should be. Ready to go, and we actually need to be ready to go because one of the things that the school committee needs to accept is this. Decarbonization roadmap for the two Stowe schools. So it has to be in place by the time we ask.
Got it. So just because of the timing of their not meeting, you kinda have to do the work ahead of time, and then they get a to yay or nay on it. Okay, great. Uh, but just, you know, having. Having paid for consultants on projects, it's always good enough to have to pay for them twice.
I do just wanna mention that based on last year, they did meet throughout the summer. So they did meet four times last summer. So maybe there is a meeting that they do plan to have this year. Uh, they met twice in June, once in July. And actually twice in August they met, but once was a workshop. Um, so it looks like they, you know. They must have summer business to do to get ready for the new school year, so maybe there is an opportunity. If the assessment is done to get it on a summer agenda for them.
That would be, that would be terrific if it could be done. I'm, you know, just basically. Uh, sort of repeating what I the superintendent told me, so. I don't think, he didn't feel I would be ready to take this up until the fall, but. Could be pulled in.
Maybe our select board.
Perhaps you could be graciously persuasive.
Right, maybe our board could reach out to the school committee members if need be.
Yeah.
Yes.
No, especially after Saturday, we'll see.
Yeah, if we get our fingers bitten off, I I mean, no, I didn't mean that at all.
We'll work on it.
Well, thank you for this incredible work that you.
Yes.
Committee are doing.
And it's quite valuable, not just for us, but.
Everything.
For everything in generations to come, I it's.
Well, thank you, and you know, look forward to meeting with you again in. The end of June with our. Climate Action Plan and the. We're planning to do a little show and tell for this new website I mentioned, Energize Stowe.
It's looking really good.
We'll.
And the Climate Action Plan looks very pretty.
Great.
Does the Energize uh Stowe website to also encourage individuals to do what they can in their.
Exactly, and that's the whole purpose is to reach out to residents and. List actions they can take, how they can take it. Collect information on how well we're doing against the plan, so that that's really what it's for.
The board could challenge another board to see, you can have challenges on there to see who does better. So you could pick a board and challenge the their members.
Challenge you. There's my glove.
Try to read the motion.
So, uh, we didn't know if you want, I mean, that it doesn't require any votes. We did add a motion in case you wanted to ta- take a vote tonight, just to offer support.
I think so.
Sure.
I I think we should.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Madam Chair, I move to support the Green Advisory Committee in pursuing the designation of Climate Leader Community for the town of Stowe.
Wholeheartedly seconded.
All those in favor. Aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arnie.
Take care.
Take care, Arnie.
Thanks again for taking.
See you soon, Arnie.
All right, we now have a donation of a tree. We're at the acceptance of a donation of a tree from. Storybook Tree Services who planted a tree for us in Stowe Center Park on Arbor Day.
Yes, well, we normally love to have the board accept donations before they occur. Um, the timing of this with Arbor Day, we just didn't uh couldn't coordinate. Um, the timing of this with Arbor Day, we just didn't, uh, couldn't coordinate it, but um, I knew it was something that the board would happily accept, so. Um, there were pictures on Facebook, if you saw, of them planting the tree in Town Center Park. It'll be great. Uh, we really appreciate Jeff Hall and, and the donations he makes for Stowe.
Yeah.
And it survived the rainstorms.
Yes.
Probably was profit from it.
Yes, definitely.
I don't know.
I have a question in the Stowe paper. It said he was from a different company, but.
Yes.
We researched this before the.
Oh, you did?
Meeting, 'cause I had the same question.
Alright.
Um, it seems that, that uh, is it, is it severally named for some reason, it's?
Storybrook Tree Company Incorporated, when you click on the link, goes to Aurelia Arborist Services.
That's right, it was Aurelia.
Yeah. So, I guess they're one and the same.
Should we say Storybook Tree Services slash Aurelia Services or?
It's easy for you to say, you don't have to read the motion.
She carefully ducks that. Just saying.
We could do that.
Did he identify himself as Storybook Tree Services in the?
So Bruce Fletcher did. Bruce Fletcher said Jeff Hall from Storybrook Tree Services.
Okay, then we'll stick with that. So you don't have to say Aurelia?
I can add it, I'm adding it.
But what if it's a subsidiary and it's not really Aurelia?
Let's stick with the.
Stick with the, with script written, okay.
You know, maybe the other is, is a uh.
Holding.
As you said.
Parent company, yes. Well, actually, it's.
Arborist Services are different than tree.
Aurelia Arborist Services, a Storybrook Tree Company.
Oh, okay, so Storybrook.
Right, so we're good with Storybrook.
Yes, we are.
Ready?
Yes, please, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the donation of a sapling copper beech tree from Jeff Hall. Jeff Hall of Storybrook Tree Services for the Stowe Center Common. In addition, the board would like to thank and recognize Jeff Hall for continuing this annual Arbor Day tradition. Stowe is a much greener and lovelier place thanks to his generosity.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and here, here.
Here, here, right, my favorite tree, and I hope we treat it because that horrible disease is going after beech trees. So it has to be treated or it's.
Copper beeches are so beautiful.
They are stunning.
Okay, um, ratification of the Stowe Police Local Two O Six Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Um, there is a disposition item before that.
Kinda get rid of an old GPS.
Well, let's do that then.
Go for it, Hector.
Madam Chair, I move to declare as surplus, a Trimble three one three five six dash twenty GPS Pathfinder. Valued at less than ten thousand dollars and belonging to the town, and to authorize the disposal of this surplus item.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Alright, ratification of the collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, um Sergeant Scott came over this evening as the president of the police union. With a signed contract from the police, um, so they have ratified it on their end. Um, the terms that I sent you previously, um, all remain, there were no changes to that. So that is the contract that goes forward should you ratify it this evening.
I did have one question about it. I noticed that in the contract, officers hired after July, July first twenty-three. Are not paid differential pay for if they go into military and don't make as much, why is that?
So the previous contract stated, as of the date of this contract, they will not be paid the differential. We just solidified it with the date because everyone was like, well, the date of this contract changes every three years, so it really didn't make sense to um, what that was. Um, we've also found that there has been a discrepancy of those that are recalled. And those that are volunteering for service. Um, and unfortunately, the last nine months, we had someone who volunteered for service. Um, that we were paying, and then we were paying overtime to fill the shifts because it was a voluntary assignment. And so we're trying to discourage voluntary when we have such a small workforce. Um, certainly if someone's recalled to active duty, it's, it's a different, um, it's not a reserve. Um, this is for more the reserves than when folks are taking assignments versus. So, so it was a clarification of the previous language, um, and to just try and discourage. Not that we don't wanna discourage volunteering, but it, it causes a hardship for us when they do.
Right. It's one thing when you have to go, it's another thing when volunteer to go, yeah.
Yes.
I remember those.
Okay, anything else?
No, thanks for your hard work.
Yes.
Yes.
Too bad about the body cameras.
We will revisit.
Yes, I'm sure.
Persevere. Um, so for your knowledge, um, the uh, non-union members will be wearing body cameras. So the chief, the lieutenant, and those that are on um, as uh, special officers. Um, be, so the chief will be coming here at your next meeting with the policy. Um, we did negotiate a policy with the union uh, for many months to get the body worn camera policy. Uh, unfortunately, as I said, we could not get the financial aspect of it. Um, but so we've, we've decided to move forward with the administration and they'll, they will start wearing them. Uh, we are using ARPA funds, uh, because it's a lesser amount, and then we didn't need the capital funds at town meeting.
That explains the town meeting.
Yes. But so you will see uh, the chief, the lieutenant, and, and the Lake Boone officer, and any other special officers wearing them soon.
Cool.
Great. Alright, ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to ratify the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven Stowe Police Local Two O Six Collective Bargaining Agreement. As presented at this meeting and further authorize the town administrator to sign on the town's behalf.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Town meeting recap.
We put this on every year, if anything you wanna talk about or?
I thought it went well.
I thought it went, yeah. In spite of the clicker issue.
Yeah, it's a difference.
I mean, the attendance was, I mean, it felt like there weren't a lot of.
The attendance was low. And some, I had somebody approach me and say, is it because it was a Saturday and there's soccer games? And I go, well, last year it was a Saturday, but the school was on the budget and a lot of people showed up. So if they could have shown up for the school, they couldn't have showed up for this one as well.
Yeah, I mean, there was nothing overly controversial, um, even the firearms bylaw, uh, the folks that. I think Linda told me she had looked and forty-six people that signed the original petition last year had attended. Um, many of those would have attended anyways. I, I think our number was a hundred and thirty-something was the attendance. Um, so yes, it went, I mean, I thought it went really well. I, yes, the clickers were an issue. However, uh, it was fairly seamless with folks with their cards. Um, I met with Jim earlier today and we've talked about, um, you know, in the future, maybe he'll ask at the start of town meeting. If people wanna use cards or clickers, it certainly moves much quicker when you're just raising your hand. Um, but I, as I told him, I will, I've tried to stay out of that because. Just one more thing that I have to take ownership of, um, but I will get more involved in the clicker software and get a better understanding of it, so.
Seems to me that clickers are useful if there's, I know there are, there are some instances where. Um, there's been a desire for a private vote, as it were. Um, and if there were, and in terms of counting, certainly the times when we've had to use tellers, it probably would be a time saver. But it seems like a lot of effort is put into making them available. And then to have them not function seems like.
Very disappointing.
Disappointing, certainly for those of you that are working hard to, to field them to begin with.
Yes.
I like the card.
The clickers are, the others, it's just they're really valuable as. And I have been there with the cards when it has to be a two-thirds vote.
Oh, yeah.
And you look around and it's like. And with the clickers, when they have worked in the past, it was much faster.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, I mean, certainly, certainly if someone, if, if we were proceeding with cards and someone said, I'd like a um, secret ballot. The secret ballot would be the clickers so that, you know, there would still be an option. Um, you know, it is, it is disappointing because we spend quite a lot of time testing them. Um, and from Friday to Saturday, issues arose and then further issues arose, so it's just. I think the problem is, when they were purchased in twenty twenty, the first few town meetings, we paid the company to come here and run them. Um, and now it's something that we're using once a year or twice a year. Um, and during that time, there's software updates, there's firmware updates, there's, you know, and so the system is set up. You do an update, then the receiver doesn't work, then you have to update the firmware on the receiver that. And it's just, you know, because we don't use them all the time, i- it's just trying to go through those steps. And in this instance, it was, there was a, there was a, because I guess we used a different range of clickers in the fall. They were hardcoded in the software, and so when we tested them all on Friday, they were in test mode, so every clicker worked. But we were in an active mode. Once we went into active mode, we were outside of the range that was hardcoded. So they had to go through every line and figure out where it was hardcoded, so, and that's why. He was on the phone with the company during town meeting, trying to find where this was. And that's why they eventually found it and were able to delete that line, so that all the clickers would then be available. I mean, it's, and it's things like that that we just wouldn't know because we're not, we don't use them enough.
Right.
Um, but I have, I told Jim, I mean, I, I don't even know what the software looks like. Other than when we test them, I like peek over the shoulder to see it, but I, I haven't, I just haven't had the ability to get invested in them. Um, but I will, I will do that.
That answers my question about why Ron was on the phone. That was a little complex. There was just a lot going on on the stage, it felt, it was just a little discombobulated. It was okay. Anything else, anybody?
My only other concern is, I am, and I think the rest of the town understood the value of a assessment of center and Hale School. And I hope that something comes back with a more reasonable price and a better explanation of what we'll be getting from that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I assume, so I have to check and see if Lancaster passed the article. Um, I think I mentioned here, it was going to be on Lancaster's warrant, it was not on Bolton's because they could not afford it. Uh, you know, the benefit to that would be that Lancaster gets it done and then they can come here and say, here's what the finished product looks like. Um, you know, or maybe they go and find a different company now that Stowe voted it down, I don't know. Um, but I think coming in with something tangible of what we get for our money is what was missing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for the record, it was asked for prior to.
Yeah.
Town meeting, capital planning specifically asked.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You know, help us to be able to go in front of the voters. And explain uh, to them, you know, the cost benefit of this, you know, what is, what is the benefit of this? What will it do? You know, what are we gonna get? And what they sent us was a non, non-answer to the question, basically, so.
Yeah, I, I was disappointed, I mean, it, it also, I, I um, was speaking to our rep. From uh, the Minuteman Schools and it sounded like. There may be a range of, of this kind of assessment and, and that this was. A high price in the, in the range, that. That Minuteman had gotten that lower price for a similar product and.
Twenty-six thousand dollars was their total price.
That's kind of.
Which makes me wonder.
Substantial difference.
Is it maybe that Minuteman didn't get as detailed a report as we might have expected, but it would have been nice to know that?
My understanding, from when we reached out, um, their report was pretty detailed.
Yeah.
It was a different company.
I, I mean, I, I do think it's a little bit of apples and oranges. I mean, it's a different company. Uh, my understanding is it was done after the school was built. It's all new infrastructure, someone had all, it's all, you know, here's what we installed, here it is in a system. E- versus researching things and figuring out when they were installed and what the models are. I think it's a little bit different. Uh, now that being said, is it fifty thousand dollars different? I don't know.
Again, I mean, on a school that's twelve years old, would, is that a reasonable cost also? I mean, Hale is old, I guess, and, you know, but why are they so close in price?
Right, and I actually think center was more than Hale, which I thought was confusing.
Yes, it was.
So, I'm sure, I mean, I'm sure they'll come back with something. Um, I mean, they went through this whole process to hire. Um, a house doctor or to retain a house doctor and, um, you know, so now they need to do. They need to be present, presenting some type of uh, report, so I'm guessing they'll come back with something in the, in a future request.
Good. It's not the first thing that Stowe has turned down for. Anything else? Should we go on to year-end transfers? On we go.
Let me just pull it up because it'll be easier. And I should have said this in the beginning of the audit discussion, um. For anyone interested, the audit reports are on our website, so they're under the town accountant's office and then all of the audit reports that we have. In electronic format are there. Alright, so the year-end transfers. Uh, primarily, as you can see from them, they are police-related, um. Whoops. As you all know, with Mike coming before you of an, on a number of occasions, uh, we have been short-staffed in the police department.
Yep.
Um, and so what this is, um. He's requesting a hundred nineteen thousand six hundred to come from the police wages line and primarily backfill the overtime line. Um, and then a number of other things, so obviously when we um, have turnover in staff. We have to buy new equipment, there's uniform requirements, um, other expenses that were not necessarily planned for. Because we were buying some for the old, the former officer and some for the new officer. Um, so he just had expenses on both the overtime and then other expenses that he was not planning for. Um, mainly because the high turnover. Um, the uh, administrative assistant, for some reason, every year, I don't know what I do. But I short that line a couple thousand dollars. It's every year without fail, so I don't know, um, but so that's just a, a simple move to just backfill that line item. And then the um, highway stipends and other department that we've had some turnover in, uh, when new laborers come in. Uh, they are eligible for certain stipends once they meet their licensing requirements. We just weren't planning for additional stipends this year. Uh, the cemetery department, when I was planning the budget, I wasn't thinking quite ahead enough. That the charter questions wouldn't have been until the following budget year, so I eliminated the cemetery overla- overtime line from the cemetery. And had put it onto the highway, well, we, he's technically still cemetery, I just needed to backfill the overtime in the cemetery line. Um, and then the rest of them are just some little, you know, obviously a couple fifty dollars, a hundred dollars. Um, and then the telephone line, we're always over. Um, so if you'll recall, in, in the fiscal twenty-five budget, uh, we've been at fifteen thousand for a while in telephone. I've increased it to eighteen thousand to hopefully deal with this overage that we usually encounter. Um, so while it looks like a lot of money, uh, we are, the, the primary is just police to police. Um, this year, we are fortunate enough that we did not, I did not jinx us enough that we overspent snow and ice. We did not overspend snow and ice, uh, the first time, and I can't even recall looking back. Well, I got close there on April first, jinxing us, but, um. Usually the first round of transfers, we are backfilling that, um, we don't need to do that. Um, so there is a significant amount of fire transfers, but most of those can be done. Um, because they're all within the allowable transfer that the town accountant can make with my approval. Um, which is like, you know, police, I'm sorry, fire fighter to fire. EMT, so some of those can be done where it's um, salary to salary, they can be made, uh, within the same department. Um, this one, it's wages to overtime. Um, this one, it's wages to overtime, so we really needed to have it come through the year end transfers. Um, any questions on those?
My only question was, so it feels to me like the police, there's. I didn't do the math, but you have various things itemized on the right and. You're taking it out wages on the left and it's just, I mean, you wouldn't be asking if you weren't allowed to to do that. So it says wages on the right and it's, you're doing equipment and other things, I don't know.
Yes, so these year end transfers are allowable under state law, the last two months of the fiscal year and the first new month. First month of the new fiscal year with a vote of the finance committee and the select board. Um, I started in my office because the finance committee met tonight and they voted to approve these transfers. Um, so these types of transfers to go from, say, highway to police or. Um, salary to expenses needs a vote of you, both of your boards. Um, the transfers I was mentioning, like the um fire department, it's salary to salary. So when you look at the warrant that's voted at town meeting. The reason the warrant is less descriptive than the budget, so the more detailed budget you see is that, that's what allows transfers to be made. So the fire department wages, they have a whole bunch of subcategories under that that you don't see in the warrant. Because as long as it's in that wages of, I can authorize a transfer. Um, anything that goes outside of those lines, you and the finance committee need to authorize.
Got it.
If that answers that.
Totally, thank you.
I mean, you know, it looks like a large number, but realistically, when you look at our total budget for the town. Realistically. This is. Yeah.
Right, and it's not, you know, it it's not that. Well.
But no, I'm serious because I have sat in budget meetings this time of year and. Looked at it and gone, oh my god. So to see it at this level and in the uh a small percentage like this. Kudos um to you and who and all folks involved, obviously, to keep this um in line. Um. It makes life a whole lot easier.
Thank you, and I, you know, it's not that departments are just overspending. Um, the departments, I mean, I've talked about it, departments are really good at staying within their budget, only buying what they need. I mean, I've worked in towns that it's like a s- a f- a spending frenzy in the month of June because people have money left in their budget. And they're buying whatever they can to stockpile. It does not happen here.
We used to do that in the air force.
Yeah, if people don't need it, they're not buying it. Um, so. You know, this obviously was unforeseen with the police department losing, so it's, it, you know, it's an easy justifiable, yes, it's a hundred nineteen thousand. But it's all from police to police, I'm not looking, you know, and and Mike is great, it's not like he would say, oh, you need to take it from somewhere else. You know, he really, if if he knows he's gonna go over, he tries to make sure he has that in his budget, and most departments do that. Um, so, you know, I, uh, the hope would be that we don't need another round of year end transfers. Excuse me, um, you know, so the town accountant and I went through, this is what we've come up with for this round. The last warrant of um the fiscal year is always our first meeting night, so July ninth. Is when she will post the June thirtieth bills, everything that we have as of June thirtieth. Um, so potentially, if we get close, we might need to make another round or if something else unforeseen happens. Um, but hopefully, between this and then departments just sort of keeping an eye on things, we'll be okay.
Sounds good. Uh, I'd like to echo JT's kudos in the broader, again, just you're managing. Budget and I think that partly that is why we had a town meeting that was very unlike the nineteen seventy four. Meeting that was a candidate of four nights of. Yeah. Mind numbing. So thank you for, for um just. For creating a culture or for and for for shepherding through our budget so that. We can go do other things on Saturday afternoon after the meeting.
And Sunday and Monday.
Thank you.
Do you have one question?
Sure.
So for the police wages, it's coming out of police wages? And it's going to police overtime and other wages?
So all of those police lines on the right makes up the hundred nineteen thousand?
Right.
Yep.
But I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand. What's the hundred and nineteen doing sitting on the police wage aside?
Cause we had three officers leave and we didn't backfill them, it took us a long time to fill them.
Okay.
So we had, that's why the wages went unspent, but we've been spending overtime to fill the shifts. So that's why the overtime is gonna be over because um. Even, you know, even when he runs a shift light or doesn't backfill, it's still the rest of them are all filled on overtime.
But if they're all fifty one two hundreds. They're not going outside, right?
They're not, but because he has the other ones, it just made it easy to put it on the same sheet.
Okay.
If it, if that was the only one and he didn't need all those other ones, then we could have just authorized it, but um since I was coming here anyways, it just made sense to put it on there.
Okay. Cool.
Good. Wanna vote?
Sure, why not? What else have we got to do? Madam Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four year end transfers as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Minutes.
Beautifully done.
As always.
Yeah, thank you, Joyce.
Yep.
I'm ready to vote on that too.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the April twenty third twenty twenty four meeting as drafted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, that's unanimous. Right, do we have any more motions?
Nope.
Oh, I didn't, uh, actually, correspondence, sorry.
Yeah.
Jumping things. Any comments on correspondence?
I do have a few.
Alright then.
Um, so I noticed, first I was trying to figure out, well, what happened at Minuteman with these funds transfers? That they're doing, same thing that we just did, basically.
So that's the um equivalent of uh their free cash, so their excess and efficiency is free cash. So um they were just um stating that they're moving. They're moving some money from their free cash, so we don't vote on their free cash transfers, they do. So it's just a notification of how they're moving some money around from their reserves.
And as far as the alcohol uh licensing. Is there anything we need to do? I mean, can Fort and Field now sell li- cocktails to go? Or do they need to come back and ask?
So cocktails to go was not part of the license, um I'd have to see if there's a new um. Authorization that needs to be made on behalf of the local licensing authority. That was just under the COVID measures, that was just, if they had a liquor license, they were allowed to. They've now sort of just solidified those, so my understanding is there's nothing that the local licensing authority needs to do to extend that. However, if. Um, and I'll still use Fort and Field, so Fort and Field, when they applied for their permit, did not put um outdoor. The outdoors um seating availability. They could now come back and ask for their license to be amended in a much easier capacity to allow for outdoor dining than before COVID. Um, I don't really expect they would be the only ones that um have a liquor license, but they already have the uh, the exterior covered. Um, you know, as does the golf courses, it's the whole course, so there's no restaurants in town, I mean, we're not gonna see the Red Ginger putting. Cafe tables outside, so. So I don't really think much of that applies to here, but they were advisors that came from the ABCC, so we just wanted to make you aware. If you were not already, that the s- the legislature has adopted those.
Yeah, I was happy to see that it passed, but didn't know. Change.
Yeah, I'll double check, I don't believe they put any um new requirements for the to-go um beverages.
Um.
Gives me the will.
But if, for next year, when they come back to renew, the. It's upon them to make sure that's included in their licenses and not. The request of the license, I should say.
I I don't believe so.
I think it's kind of automatically included.
As a rate, they get the license, they can go to go drinks.
Yes, yes, it's if they have an on premises license.
Yep.
They can do to-go beverages, um.
As long as one item of food is ordered and all the.
One.
Cause I went through all the requirements, that for the to-go.
Right, you can't just call and order a Mai Tai from Fort and Field and go pick it up and go home with it. Y- if you can, you can order a meal to go and a Mai Tai with it.
Right.
Yes, you can't just, you can't just do curbside alcohol.
I didn't, I didn't see in there, I mean, in. In some establishments, I think, you know, a a person cannot go and purchase several drinks. You know, like, let's say I'm sitting at a table with all of us and I go up to the bar and I say I want four drinks, they won't necessarily, they'll have a server. Do that. Um, you know where I'm going with this, so if, if, is there any restriction on, on those takeout? Right, so, so, but I mean, I could order takeout for ten people, but can I order takeout drinks for ten people? Or is there some way that that's not elaborated?
Uh, no, cause and to be honest, that wasn't elaborated in COVID, um. Uh, my guess is it would have to be corresponding to the number of meals. But quite frankly, if I was an alcoholic, I could just order five meals for myself and five drinks. No one's gonna know if I'm saving the meals to eat later, I mean, you know, I, I'll be honest, I I I tried the to-go. Um, I ordered from the ninety nine ones, but no one comes out, no one checked an ID. They walked out and it was, I think it was a Mai Tai, they handed me my food and my Mai Tai and I was like, okay, so.
And yet the law says that that Mai Tai has to go in the trunk.
That's right.
Yep.
And it has to be sealed.
Yeah, cause you can't, and you still can't, you can't drink and drive, yes, the 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 cocktail was sealed, but.
And it has to be placed out of reach of the driver. Oh, well.
Alright.
Um, the cul-de-sac thing? I didn't understand it because technically I live in a cul-de-sac, so am I, is meeting house in violation?
It's just an over five thou- five hundred linear feet. It's a different permitting process.
Okay.
Yeah, but it.
This is the question about.
The five hundred.
The cottages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and then finally, on the absentee ballot. A person is concerned that people with disabilities would have a hard time voting in person, but yet they're the ones that. Would benefit the most from an absentee ballot.
They're saying that the process to get an absentee ballot is more cumbersome.
Okay.
Vote by mail, and so that was our concern, but the, that was my concern when this issue came up, but I think. Perhaps what was not understood is this was just for the one election, not every election going forward, so. I I continue to have that concern, that if we, if we can do vote by mail, let's do it, but. For a, for one single, I think.
Well, for state elections, we have no choice.
Correct, so, right, so the state elections, the difference though there is the state elections, um obviously the ballots. The state will send the postcard out having people opt in. Um, you know, I just was chatting with Linda tonight and she said, I said, oh, how's early voting going and, and you know. They had more people than they were expecting, but I was still on the slow side. Um, and she said, my fear was that we would have had to send out thirteen hundred. Vote by mail because that's how many people signed up for the uh state elections. And we probably would have got, we probably won't even get close to that in total, um, you know, and then, and then we're on the hook for that funding. And so at some point, you know, certainly if there was a, a more. Um, I don't, I guess if absentee uh voting became more difficult. Um, or there was other parameters or the state paid for, um. Uh, vote by mail, it'd be a different top- topic, but we seem to send so many out and then we're just not getting the turn of them. And then that's, you know, that's what we have to weigh it, it's the time to send them out, the time to track down who didn't mail it back, who mailed it back and then the cost. It just has not been advantageous. Now, that may change, but.
And that's what we had that discussion about and. Town clerk was successfully able to argue that for this election, it ma- made sense to not do it. I think this board, if the request comes up in the future, we need to just look at it each time.
Yep.
Right, I mean, certainly if there was, you know, more contested races, ballot questions, I mean, you wanna make it as available as possible.
Right.
And the only contested race is the school committee and. I mean, even with the charter question, we're just not getting the turnout, I mean, even towns that are having overrides and the turnout just isn't there. The last few years on on a, on local elections.
And given the turnout at town meeting, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Democracy is in trouble.
Yep.
That's all I had.
Alright, thank you, so nothing needs to go on our future agenda?
No.
How about that final motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, that is unanimous.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.